Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM on Monday, December 11th, 2023, and I call this meeting the Lexington Select Board to order. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom, and tonight's meeting is a working session, so we will not be taking public comment. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. Further, that this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. All members of the board are present tonight, so we will be just doing a roll call introduction. On my far right is Ms. Haye.
Sitting.
Yes, here.
Sitting next to me is Ms. Barry, the vice chair.
Here.
I'm Joe Pato, the chair, and on my left is Mr. Lucente.
Here.
And on the far left is Mr. Sandin.
Yes.
Joining us this evening from staff are Mr. Malloy, the town manager, and Ms. Axtell, the deputy town manager.
Yes.
And remotely, we have Ms. Katzenbach, the Select Board's executive clerk. Since we are here, the entire board is in person. Votes will largely be taken by voice if we have any votes tonight. But it's a working session, we'll be discussing things, not voting. Though we don't have public comment, I would like to remind all participants that we are neighbors and working together for the best interest of the community, and I ask that all discussion be made civilly and respect without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Tonight, we don't have a town manager's report or Select Board concerns, but I think there was a member of the board who wanted to make a comment. No, all right, so we will be moving on to items for individual consideration. Our first item is to discuss user use restrictions for 38A Lowell Street parcel. And Mr. Malloy, I think there's been some evolution of the request.
Yes. So originally, we had wanted to have a discussion about whether or not the one parcel, Lot 20-38A, should be removed from the conservation restriction that is being placed on what was formerly the Busa Farm. And as we had some other discussions, it came up that doing any kind of a land swap there didn't make sense because the Lex Farm Group is using all of the land that's available there. And so this is an item that, in talking with Mark Sandin, who I talked to initially about it, we talked on Friday and decided this was an item that, after he had a chance to speak with the Lex Farm Group, that we didn't want to pursue any further.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. So this topic is moot, but we wanted to make sure that the public was informed of why it was that the issue was taken away. Ms. Barry?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
So has the conservation restriction been put on the property yet?
Not yet. It's still being finalized, and that's why, in talking to Mark initially, it hadn't been finalized yet. And if we were going to have a discussion about carving that lot along Lowell Street out, then this is the time that we would have to do it before we filed the conservation restriction because that, once that was filed, it would take town meeting and Article 97 type of action to take it out of a conservation restriction.
What's the timeline to get it finalized?
Well.
This has been hanging since we acquired the property?
Yes.
Okay.
And so it's been worked on for a long time, and there was some issues with the state. First, there was a, my understanding, a nonprofit group that was going to hold the CR, and then the state was going to hold it. There was an issue with a state official who had an issue with something dealing with the land, and that person left the state. And now the person that we're working with, it's moved at a lot faster pace. And so Carol Kowalski and Town Council have been working on it, and it's moved in the last year or two a lot faster than it had for a very long period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? If not, we will move to our second item. And our item tonight, second item tonight, is to review the town manager's 2023 performance evaluation. As you may recall, two weeks ago, it was on our agenda, but we were running long, so we pushed it to tonight's discussion. The materials that are in the packet are the same as were included at that meeting. And the only thing we did discuss at that meeting was that I asked the board to review the written comments and provide any narrative that you saw as, or provide comments on anything that you didn't agree with. In particular, what I'm looking for is to make sure that in past years, when we've gotten comments coming from one individual, it was annotated in the review as a member or two members noted this topic area. As much as possible, I want this to be a review that originates from the board as a whole, and I intend to include all comments and have them be in the voice of the board as a whole. If there is an objection to a comment, I will retain that comment, but then annotate that it in fact is a minority view. So I asked board members to send materials to staff. As of today, there have been none, so you are welcome to provide any additional feedback tonight. Otherwise, the consolidated review will take all of these comments and integrate them into one narrative. So that's, so they'll be, I'm going to have a discussion on those items. I will note that when looking at the performance ranking sheet in past years, there's sometimes been a very wide range on some topics, like one member indicating that is an area that needed improvement, while one or two other members might have said this was exceptional. That did not occur this year. We did have differences of perspective, but they were clustered much tighter together. The other topic I wanted to discuss on this is that Ms. Haye and I have completed the 360-degree interviews with staff. Last year, when we did this, we wrote a draft report reflecting that. But we felt that in conversation with the board at that time, the board felt we were a little ahead of the game. So this year, we decided to just convey general themes to the board at this meeting before writing a report, so that the board as a whole has the opportunity to hear those comments and to augment them with any individual perspective that they may have with their interactions with staff in various contexts. I will say that the general takeaway from our discussions is that most of the comments we received are largely similar to what we heard last year, but several respondents recognized efforts on the town manager's part to respond to the board's feedback from last year's review. There was a sense of improvement, but respondents want to see a continuation and deepening of these changes. The positive perceptions that I'll note that we heard, and these are themes, and they're not in any particular order. They include that town manager was approachable, had good financial planning, had good ideas and support for innovation, was responsive to email, that he fostered collaboration, that his hands-off management style worked well for some, but from some others, we also heard that it wasn't the best style for all, that there was improved engagement with staff, but that this was just beginning, and there was a keen desire for this to continue and expand. Areas of perceived need for continued improvement included multitasking, interfering with substantive engagement or the perception of engagement, communication issues, which we have noted a number of times, and that included limited feedback on individual performance by staff members, and a desire for additional strategic direction, driving strategy and organizing the senior management team to be more effective in working together on strategic issues. Those topics, in fact, I think all of these topics, both pro and con, are things we have heard broadly and we have heard over the years, in particular, the last two years that Ms. Haye and I interviewed staff members. So there isn't a large change in what we were hearing. Ms. Haye, do you have any additional comments?
No, I think you largely summarized well what we heard. I would note that we had a larger participation pool slightly last year. We also framed this slightly differently this year. You know, last year, it was a very open-ended. We had shared with anybody who was meeting with us the sections of our key competency grid as they related to management and supervision. This year, we acknowledged that, you know, almost everyone, I think everyone actually had spoken with us last year and that we were looking for any perceived changes, any updates, any new information. And then, of course, there were a few new members of SMT with whom we met this year that we didn't meet last year. So I think, you know, those are sort of the key additional points, so that we were asking people just to kind of give us an update from the report that we publicly discussed at this table a year ago. And that there were a few people who said they didn't feel, on that basis of introduction, that there were a few people who felt there weren't any changes and therefore, you know, didn't have anything new to add, so we didn't hear from them.
Right, thank you, Ms. Haye. That helped fill in my memory and my notes. So colleagues, that, just to give you context, the, what I'd like to now proceed with is a discussion on the narrative portion of the review and walk through, not walk through each comment individually, but each section and ask, are there any items here that you would like to ask questions about or ask for adjustment or disagreement with? And we'll start with category or area number one, which is identifying the manager's strengths expressed in terms of principal results achieved during the rating period. I won't call on you individually, so only let me know if you have a comment, and I will go to you. And for those following us remotely, this is the first page of the narrative evaluation section. Ms. Barry, just a second. I just want to make sure that... So, Mr. Sandin, I don't have the full PDF file. I have the individual ones that are attached on the...
The three attachments.
The attachments to the item in NOVUS.
The third one, the evaluation narrative section.
And while Mr. Sandin is pulling up that document, Ms. Barry, you had a comment.
I'll just comment on this first one and say, I think between the five of us, we covered all of the different areas that were kind of the major points, you know? And I think that's probably, I can't speak for the rest of you why you didn't comment or say change this or don't change that, but I think just on the basis of, you know, Mr. Malloy has five bosses, basically, which is not easy. We're all going to have different areas kind of that we focus on or different areas of concerns or different areas of conflict, if you want to use that word. And, you know, that's, you know, what my experience is. Isn't necessarily what Mr. Sandin's experience is, isn't what Mr. Lucente or Ms. Hayes or even yours, Mr. Pato. So I think that's why I didn't necessarily comment or say, because, you know, a lot of this resonated with me, and I think definitely on this first one, we covered a broad swath of different projects and things going on, so.
Right, no, I agree. I think each of us is seeing a different facet or from a different perspective, and it would be a striking surprise if we had said exactly the same thing or even covered the same range. But the question is, is there anything here that's an outlier? That's problematic. It may have been something you hadn't thought of individually, but when you look at it and say, yeah, I can see that, that's, in which case, it's, you know, it's coming from us as a whole. So, Mr. Lucente, it looks like you are...
I mean, my only comment would be on the first topic of the first... We're still talking about section one.
This is section one, right?
Yeah, the roller coaster reference to the budget. I wasn't sure what... I guess I didn't see that, or I didn't feel it, at least, that it was a roller coaster. I wasn't sure what the thinking was there. Maybe I forgot something or...
So I'm not sure if we're supposed to out ourselves or not, but that was my comment. So I am Select Board member number one. I will own everything that's in here that I wrote. That was a reference to going into town meeting and the whole issue over the trash and the trash fees, and how that was kind of a down-to-the-wire situation. And having had that been kind of more clear prior to that, because I think we were, you know, the manager wanted us to go in one direction and was hoping we were going to go in one direction, and then by the end of June, the board decided to go in another direction. So I found that to be problematic in terms of opening clear conversation.
Would that fit better in a needs improvement area? Just as a... My only thought. But otherwise, I think in general, I agree with the sentiments that were expressed. There's nothing in the document in section one that I thought, oh, that it didn't happen or I need clarification on. I think it was pretty clear.
All right. I think what I'm taking away from this is I'm going to move that comment into needs improvement and be a little more explicit referring to the process for developing and working out and communicating about trash fees. Okay. And it's a good thing we're recording this so that I will be able to remember what it is that I'm doing. All right. Mr. Sandin?
I just wanted to not comment about item number one, but the overall review narrative process. And I largely agree with Ms. Barry that while I might not have written a lot of the comments that I read, I can recognize why they have been written, and I think it's incredibly valid that all five have a chance to make their comments in their own voice. And I do understand it's very difficult to have five very different people having five very different impressions, but I do think it's valid that... And I can see why many of these comments were written, even if I wouldn't have written them myself.
Very good, thank you. All right, so if there are no other comments on one, I will integrate those into a single flow. Item number two is what performance areas would identify as most critical for improvement? And I brought in Select Board member one's comment into this section and added it to items in this section. Are there comments or questions in this area? So I had one, and Ms. Barry, since you added yourself, the last paragraph under your section, which was about hearing questions or feedback on an item, did I read this correctly and indicate that you felt that this stifled the board a little bit in how we approach providing feedback?
Let me read this again. Yes.
All right, so...
Stifled to the point that some things feel like they should just be approved without our input or community input.
Right, and I think the combined view of the board is that an inclusive process of gathering input is something we value highly.
And have valued.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
It's kind of part of our core.
Okay.
And I would say that's actually reflected in other comments in this section as well. I mean, I think that that general notion is worded differently, but it seems to me in all five.
Yep. Any other comments? Tell you what. Why don't you indicate when you're done, that you're ready for us to move to the next section? All right, so thumbs up with this. All right. Let's move to section three, which is constructive suggestions or assistance we could offer the manager to enhance performance.
So again, it seems to me like there's sort of some thematic threads that run through all of these answers here. And it feels to me generically that that's probably going to be the way to go as you try to pull this all together. So I guess maybe, just as a suggestion, if there's something that anybody, and this kind of goes to what you asked us to do before, but if there's something here that is not reflected in three or four or five of the comments, perhaps, without forcing anyone to out themselves, but perhaps we could identify if there's something that is, you know, a lone comment, whether or not that feels appropriate for inclusion. Otherwise, I think the, probably the step forward here is to pull the threads that are repeated.
Right, that was my intention, was to try to take each of the themes and repeat them, but not to exclude any of the themes that were identified, right? But if they're duplicated with slightly different words, I was going to consolidate that. Mr. Lucente?
I just want to note that on number three, Select Board member two and four made similar comments, but in different sections. There was a section or a comment about adopting software tools that facilitate two-way communication on the third question, but on the second question, that was also brought up by Select Board member number four, saying it would be, you know, nice to finally implement that goal. So I don't know if, in the final write-up, rather than having two sections, it can be put under whichever one you think is appropriate.
Right. I, not putting too much work on myself, was going to try to reduce duplication without losing difference in perspective or character. And all done magically. Anyway. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Section four is comments we have on the manager on priorities, expectation, goals, or objectives for the new rating period. And I will say that we did our goal-setting session earlier this fall, and that all the materials from that have not been fully put together by our consultant. I think he's still waiting on one or two of you for materials. In any case, so we don't have our goals finalized, from which we would then set Mr. Malloy's goals specifically as a board, and we will do that. So take this section as being general discussion on priorities, but it's, we're going to have a process of actually assigning goals to Mr. Malloy, as we have done in the past. And I will out myself. I am board member number five, and I said this will be discussed. Yeah, I think we know each other well enough, but... Not for me, too. The... Any other comments on this section? All right. Section five, unplanned actions and achievements. We have only one member, but those are all recognizable. Mr. Lucente?
I'll just note, I think if we ever pre-engage the concept of starting from scratch with the review plan, I think it's always hard because when we go to do the review, it's, what did we do last year? Okay, let's tweak it or... But if we were to start over, I think some of the duplication in this and some of our inability to, you know, because we're... Yes, we manage the town manager to some degree, but we're not like your typical management where you're working directly with the person all day and can see the, some of the content is sort of more geared, or some of the questions are more geared toward the, you know, an individual managing another individual. That's, I didn't personally fill out anything in this section because I think it was, I don't have his to-do list next to me to say, oh, he still hasn't checked off that or checked off that. We don't always know every single thing the town manager's doing every day. So I struggled with this one to give a, you know, a good answer. You know, just trying to, I think in context, if we're all putting no comments down, maybe we shouldn't be asking the question, or we should ask it in a different way. That's the point I'd like to make.
So I hear you, Mr. Lucente, and I think, so this was an ICMA forum for town managers. And in past years, we have actually done a reasonable job of setting the manager's goals, so we would have a set of expected results. And then you could identify things that weren't on the goal set that were accomplished or actions that were there. I will note that last year, we, as a board, didn't set that explicit set of goals. So there were carryover from the previous year. There were a number of items that were multi-year, so it made sense. And the timing of when we were able to do the review made it really awkward to set up a new set of goals. Hopefully, this year, we will execute on that list shortly. I'm just waiting for the report to come in, and then we won't be in this position next year. All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll move to item six, which are learning and development plans. And I think, Ms. Barry, you commented that the board has, actually hasn't seen or set learning plans. So it, while we're aware of Mr. Malloy attending ICMA conferences and certain professional development, we sort of don't have a good view of, you know, what's the breadth and scope? And somewhat from a curiosity perspective, it would be helpful for us to have a little better insight, but I don't feel that we have useful commentary at this stage on this topic. Any other comments on this one? So I will remind members, please use your microphones.
Not unless the rest of them want to out themselves.
You're welcome to, but you don't have to.
I'm number three.
I'm number two.
Mr. Sandin, I think you are no longer optional.
Number four.
It's by process of elimination. All right.
So, Mr. Pato, I was just going to say that the one other thing that I think is worth making sure we incorporate into this, at the end of last year's, we did have some specific recommendations and areas of focus that we asked for. And I think incorporating that and tying, you know, where we've heard or seen or the comments in the narrative report reflect progress there, I think that's an important thing to sort of track year over year.
I agree, and I was intending to carry over last year's topics, not necessarily the exact narrative, but reflecting what we wrote here and how it applied to that. And I will also say that in discussion within the 360s, we did point out here is what the board asked for, how have you perceived that in the areas that were relevant to management and supervision? So if there are no other comments, were there any topics in the... performance grid that board members want to discuss? If there aren't, I will just include that and not add any narrative to it. I didn't see anything that had strange variances. So it wasn't something that I felt we needed to address this year. All right.
Mr. Pato. I wanted to see if the board after tonight's discussion would then send me their responses for sections seven and eight, or how you wanted to deal with that.
Right, section seven and eight are reflect supervision and management of staff. Some members, I think, may have responded earlier. I know I did not. But I was, because at that point I hadn't yet done the 360s and I was waiting. So if any, anybody would like to update what you've sent in in the past, you're free to, or you can leave it stand, Mr. Sandin.
Can you elaborate a little bit more about what you would expect on seven and eight? I thought this was, I thought we were waiting for the 360 review. Is that basically what seven and eight are, or is it something different?
So section seven and eight are staffing and supervision. And for me, I needed to have the discussion with with staff before I could respond to those. But some members of the board did provide values in those grids. And so the question for Ms. Katzenbeck was, if you want to update, please do. If you want to see the draft of the, rather than just the the thematic discussion that Ms. Hay and I provided tonight. If you want to see the narrative of that before you you fill in the grid, that's acceptable, but that will, Ms. Katzenbeck needs to know that so we can talk, schedule.
I would appreciate seeing the narrative before going at it.
All right. Ms. Hay.
So I guess I was just going to ask the board generally, given what we've sort of provided this evening, based on those those meetings, are there particular things that the board would like either more specificity? And we obviously, we're trying to balance it. We are, we have promised everyone and we will maintain anonymity in any information that we gathered. But if there are particular themes that, you know, other board members would like us to elaborate a little more fully, or if you think there are things that you didn't hear based on the overview that you've got tonight, that maybe we can dig back through our notes and see if if we have, or if we need to do any follow-up, that would be helpful as well.
Right, and if your memory needs jogging, I will send out what I read tonight. So the thematic points. Ms. Barry.
I think if you could indicate how many people you spoke to last year, and then how many people you spoke to this year, because you said there was a group of people this year that passed on speaking to, is that what I understood you to say, Ms. Hay?
There were a few who passed, but there also were some new people this year. So the numbers will probably mesh out and not be terribly identifiable. With whom we spoke.
Right.
I think one of the challenges, and I don't, I don't want to mess with the anonymity piece. One of the challenges is understanding, was it a single comment from a single person? Or was it a theme that spread across multiple or all people? I'll give an example, desire for more strategic direction. I don't know if that was one or 12, right? Because that would sort of weigh to me like, well, we really need to talk to Mr. Malloy about the strategic direction he's giving his management team versus, okay, it's an individual issue.
So all of the comments that are included here as theme thematic came from multiple individuals. There's nothing here that came as a single individual's perspective.
Okay, that's helpful.
And most of these, I'll have to go back and look at my notes, but most of these had, you know, a fair number of people indicating. Again, just like us, wouldn't expect the same set of comments from every individual. And and they were, you know, like, for example, there were people who said, you know, the hands-off style is really good for them. Some of those said, but I can recognize why it wouldn't be great for somebody else. Some people told us, you know, that that style isn't working for me. It's so it's, it's, we get it in from different kinds of views and try to shape what, what is it that we're seeing? But I'm not sure, you know, I can quantify easily because it's such a small group, right? Giving numbers will be problematic. Any other questions or comments? Well, I think I have my couple of weeks.
What's the anticipated timeline?
That's what I was just mumbling to myself. So it won't be ready for the 18th, and that's our last meeting this year. So I'd have it, I plan to have it for our first meeting in January. It's not currently on our agenda because you hadn't had this meeting, but I don't want to let it linger longer than that.
And our first meeting is the eighth, is that correct? Because the first is a Monday, so I think.
We're not meeting the first, no. Mr. Malloy, do you have that on your, or Ms. Katzenbeck? It's the eighth, okay. In fact, no, the 18th is what's on our agenda is our next meeting. So well, let's plan to have it wrapped up on the, on the eighth. And with luck, we will also have the report from the consultant on our goals so that that can play into establishing the manager's goals. All right. So seeing no other comments, we will move to our last item tonight, which is discussion on proposed updates to the noise by law. Colleagues, you will remember that last summer, there was a staff working group working on revising the noise by law to address a number of issues, but many of them came from issues where the community was raising with us on the way the language was being interpreted and enforced. When we reviewed that for inclusion in the fall special town meeting, there were a number of issues members of the board had with the scope of what had been done. And we decided not to include it on the warrant. We also decided at that point, we're going to reconstitute the noise committee, which we are in the process of doing. Because a lot of the issues were about how do we define noise pollution? And you know, what constitutes a a noise violation? That has not, that work hasn't been done yet. We haven't, while we're in the process of, we have a number of applications and and I have changes to the charge sitting on my desk. We have not yet moved forward with that. And the, the issues with ambiguity in the existing bylaw without a change in the definition of what noise is, without a change in the documents, references, or without a change in the intent of what had been there, were things that we were about to go into another construction season without clarifying. So I, I took the draft that was developed by staff and pruned it down to what I thought were just the areas that were addressing ambiguous issues. And I wrote a parallel article language to identify what would be covered at town meeting so that it was tightly bound and only would allow the changes being proposed, or at least in the areas being proposed, and wouldn't allow other changes to the bylaw. What you have before you is two attachments. One is the draft article language, which we have now sent to town council. Town council has made some wording changes, but they don't change the intent or or substance here. So and I didn't get those back until this afternoon. So what you have before us is the scope of what's intended. These, the language here, but most of the language is the same. He re reorganized a few items. And and he removed a few ambiguous words I used, which was helpful. So what we have for discussion tonight is the goal for tonight is to see whether or not there is consensus to include this article on the 2024 annual town meeting warrant. And with it, there is a, an example red line version with comments on, you know, what is this section addressing relevant relative to the article? And in addition, there is a second part which addresses a request that to delay the implementation of the grass-powered leaf blower prohibition for commercial landscapers for by one year, making it line up with the date for residential prohibitions. And this request was made earlier this year, but because of difficulty at that time in acquiring sufficient inventory of effective electric equipment. These two topics are separable and are intended to be voted at town meeting independently. But they are separable as to whether or not the board wants to put them on the warrant or not. So Mr. Sandin.
Before we get into this larger discussion, I was wondering if I could talk about one word in section 80-8 linking section I, A, B, and C. And the word is and, and I think it should be or, I think we had a change control thing because the original language proposed had an and in here. And then there was a subsequent communication from the town manager that the intent was that this word should be or. And the basic idea is when should a noise mitigation plan be offered? And there's a section A that says, when, when rock, rock removal is occurring and when it's going to occur more than seven days. And it says, and when the building commissioner says that they, a noise mitigation plan is required. And I believe the intention is that, is that we want the building commissioner to have that as an or function, not as all three of these things are required to have a mitigation plan. And I believe the town manager has presented that to us previously, that the word should have been an or.
I believe you're right, Mr. Sandin, I have similar recollection.
It could be that I grabbed the penultimate version instead of the last version.
I think it was a change control issue, yes.
Right, so this is not, again, tonight, we're talking about, do we want to address this? And then when it, we will be reviewing the actual changes later. They're, they're not going to go beyond the scope proposed, but you know, those corrections can be made. Right, because as I recall, one of the ultimate concerns the board expressed was that the way the article was framed in as proposed for the fall would have allowed all sorts of amendments to be proposed that had nothing to do with the substance that was in the, in the change control.
So I, Ms. Pato. I just have a question. So this would come as an article just to change these specific sections, or are we opening up the entire bylaw?
The article is as written, which would say the changes are in these topics. We could be even narrower and say, we, we could include the motion as the, you know, here is the new bylaw in the article, which would make it very tight. That, of course, runs of the risk of, you know, you made a slight mistake and now you're, you've, you've locked the door. So I wouldn't recommend that, but I think this, yes, the answer to your question is the intent is to have only these areas of change and only in this way.
And have you run this by town council moderator?
Not the moderator yet. First, we've gone to town council. Town council made a few wording changes to, to, you know, remove a few areas that might have allowed a little bit of wiggle. And once we have that finalized, it'll go to the moderator to make sure she agrees with scope. But it wouldn't go beyond.
Okay, then I just have another kind of point of clarification under what's now called, I'm not sure what section I'm in. 80-4, the new I six, changing the date for the landscapers from 2025 to 2026. Mr. Malloy, I think you had raised this prior to the fall and you had indicated there was some information that, you know, it's difficult to get equipment. Where did that? How did that come to you?
Mr. Microphone, please.
Came through our sustainability officer, as well as our DPW director, that they were having a difficult time buying the equipment.
Okay, so what is the the deadline for when the town itself plans to be all electric? Because we're not there yet, are we?
No. I believe it's in the existing bylaw. I don't have the exact day of the time off the top of my head.
But I guess what I'm saying is so the town is having an issue acquiring equipment as well?
We had, we had difficulty acquiring equipment that was going, that was being bought out of the $75,000 that we got from Representative Socolo that was then being loaned out to the contractors. So when we went out to buy commercial-grade equipment to loan to contractors so they could see how it would work, that's where we had a difficult time being able to buy equipment.
Okay, but the sustainability director recommends that the speech delayed as well.
She was the person who first brought it up. And then speaking with Dave Pincino and others, it seemed to make sense to delay it.
Okay, thank you for that background.
Ms. Shandy.
So I'm, I'm having trouble with including this on the warrant because I think that anyone proposing to change a town bylaw should be required to provide overwhelming proof that there's a reason to overturn the will of the people that have been voted by a townwide referendum. And I'm not yet aware of any data provided to the select board that shows that these commercial electric backpack leaf blowers are not currently available. In fact, when I checked today, I find that all 10 of the highest rated commercial electric backpack leaf blowers are in stock and available to ship immediately. So I'm a little concerned about that and that any delay in enforcement would violate the trust of the residents who voted to approve this bylaw.
Ms. Sandy, for clarification, you're referring only to part B?
Yes.
Which is the leaf blowers.
Okay, and I kind of wonder whether when they have such very different intents, the two As, the A and the B, whether they should be on separate warrant articles if we're going to move forward with them as warrant articles. I understand the town manager says you can vote on, I mean, the town council says you can vote on them separately. But just from a confusion standpoint, I think there's very different motivations for each one of these things. And I would wonder why we would have them in a similar warrant article just because the name noise was in each one of them. There are very different reasons why we're considering these things.
So I hear that, but I will point out that like when we do a capital article, the, there's like a dozen items, all of them very different, but they're all under there and they're voted independently. But it's collected together so that it's understood that these are all capital activities. So in general, I don't really want multiple articles touching the same piece of the bylaw, but the net result isn't really going to be different. Ms. Hay.
I was just going to say, as follow-on to what Mr. Malloy stated, that we also got a large number of comments today from commercial landscapers about both the inability to buy in the quantities that they need the commercial grade equipment. And I would just say, I know some people have said, well, push this off to a fall town meeting. The problem is that that is, you know, late 24. And right now, this says it would be taking effect in the spring of 25. And in order to be prepared for that season, it would require expenditures, business expenditures in the fourth quarter of 25, 24, in order to be prepared for first and second quarter of 25. So I think that if we're going to consider this, I do think spring town meeting is the right time to do it.
Right, I'm going to jump in for a second. I just want to agree with Ms. Hayes. I think that now is the time to decide. I think that now is the time to decide because of planning as well as, you know, setting your cost projections for business plan projections for the next year. Acquiring the inventory does take some time, whether or not it's available in stock. It takes time from a planning perspective. What is more interesting to me is to understand, are we in a different place today than we were when we were trying to acquire equipment with the 75K we got from the state because things do change. And I'd like to take a a temperature or an assessment of what is the market like now before making a decision. Because I think if they are readily available now, then I'm not inclined. If they're still not readily available today, then I would say, yep, this should be on the warrant so that we can test again in the spring to find out if they're readily available. And we'll make I would make a decision for myself as to whether or not I supported the change or not then. But if they are readily available now, then it's easy to say, you know, we had this discussion, it went out for a referendum. It's, you know, I don't, I want to, I don't want to reopen it. If they are not available today, then I think keeping the door open to discuss is important. And Mr. Lucente, I jumped ahead.
I think it's a little bit more complicated of more complicated than calling up a dealer and saying, hey, do you have this item? Because if you walked in the shoes of the individuals that do this for a living as commercial landscapers, it's a little bit more complex. The nature of my understanding from having had several discussions recently with several landscapers, the needs are very different than a homeowner. A homeowner can very easily get equipment, get batteries for their equipment and use it for the 45 minutes that they may need to use it. When you're doing this on a scale across an entire day, and you know, I talked to one landscaper who needs hundreds of batteries. They can't get them. There's just it's not available. So essentially, what we're what we're putting is not, you know, we have to look at what we're trying to accomplish here. We're trying to give them an opportunity to continue their business and livelihood, not just for their business and livelihood, but they service the residents of Lexington. They service homeowners who may or may not be able to do their own landscaping. They're providing a service for our residents that's needed. And I want to make sure that we're in our discussions of this, taking into account the information and the viewpoint of the individuals who are in this business, rather than just saying, I made a phone call to a dealer or something. I think we need, we need to hear from the people that do this. Mr. Pincino, as an example, is doing this on a larger scale. And and what I heard from from landscapers is that they were, you know, the the equipment that the TPW had given out, they they weren't even able to use some of it because there was no no batteries available. You know, they got they could get a piece of equipment. They just couldn't get a battery to go with it, which doesn't really help. So my my other two points I want to make is, one, I think we should keep this as one article. I don't think we should change this to be a two article discussion. I agree with with your sentiments, Mr. Pato. I think it it starts to become confusing for doing noise article one and noise article two and which one changes which. And I had a third point that I can no longer remember.
It'll it'll come to you, Mr. Lucente. I just want to say, when I said I wanted to know what it was, what was available in the market, I actually had in mind, and I should have stated it clearly, to have staff, the DPW in particular, go give us an assessment of what's available for them to acquire. And I understand that that municipal procurement processes are even more difficult than a a commercial entity's procurement. Mr. Malloy, would that be reasonable? I think Mr. Pincino has his hand up. So, Mr. Pincino, would you like to make a comment?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick points. One to Ms. Barry's question earlier. The town is under the same timeframe as the commercial landscapers. So we would also have to be 2025. And aside from availability, one of the biggest questions that were or things that we're still struggling with is the technology. Leaves in New England are very heavy in both the spring and the fall. And we have tested quite a few models and we haven't found one that we think will successfully work for the large areas that we have. So it's not just a function of are they available? It's also, we need the technology to be there in order to do the job and and provide that service with the noise requirement that you're requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Pincino. Mr. Lucente.
I remembered my third point.
I knew you would.
Yeah, it's it's availability is one. And I I think as Mr. Point, Mr. Pincino pointed out, it's technology. But we also, as as a community, made a very clear statement when this, although this was designed on the floor of town meeting, after we had IP'd it at our table, requested it to be IP'd and got unIP'd. The comments were largely around, well, we can push it back a year if things aren't ready. You know, and I don't want to pretend that we didn't have those conversations because they were they were had and they were very real. And I think we need to stand by what we what we had said and, you know, what people bought into when when they voted on this.
But now I agree with you, Mr. Lucente. That's why I said it's important to know what is the availability. And if it's not clearly available, then I'm I'm more than open to say, we need to push back. Now, Mr. Sandin.
I agree completely with Mr. Lucente's comments about that. And Mr. Pincino's comments about the importance of 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 when they say the technology is not ready, one of the main considerations there is the blowing force of the, you know, are they capable of 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 pushing the amount of leaves on a wet day that is necessary? And one of the things that we've seen is that the if you look at a rating of blowing force of the top 10 electric leaf blowers that are out there, you'll find that the the units that were purchased by the town are at the bottom of that list. And so when we get notes from landscapers saying that the town owned provided electric backpack leaf blowers are not sufficient, I agree with them. So when you look at the force that these are capable of putting out, the ones we procured compared to the next two up the line is half the force of the next two up the line. So you see that electric leaf and the top ones, the top rated electric leaf blowers are three times the force of the ones that we provided from the town. So what you're what you're starting to see now, and I have found just in the from ProtoolReviews.com, an organization that has been negative about electric leaf blowers in the past, is now, as of November, saying the electric backpack blowers are now capable of providing the same blowing force that most popular professional backpack blowers are are delivering. So I think we we do need to look at, as Mr. Pincino and Mr. Lucente are saying, we do need to look at, is the technology available? And what we're starting to see is that, yes, the technology of a gas of electric backpack leaf blowers, commercial electric leaf blowers is providing the same blowing force as the most popular gas powered leaf blowers. And again, I would suggest that we need before we overturn the vote of the people, that we make sure that we have overwhelming proof that we have a reason for doing that.
All right. So I I think what I've heard tonight, I think, is general support for keeping the article on the warrant. And and for now, keeping parts A and B on the warrant and that we will be asking for additional investigation on what's available so that we have better data. And if we get that data clearly before we have to sign the warrant, we may make a decision to keep or not part B. If it's not available in time, then it'll be information we're looking for as input to town meeting. Mr. Lucente.
Just to clarify. As we develop this article, you know, there's some items in the top section I didn't talk about that, you know, I'm questioning a little bit, is this the right time to be asking? You know, for this change, I'll give you the example that comes to mind is the increase in penalties. It's going from 50, 100 to 200. Sorry, 50, 100 and 200, I think, to 100, 200, 300. Is that right? Something like that. I'm just wondering, is that is that a good? I feel like we're trying to accomplish a goal here, which is to clarify the noise from construction. I think the more items we add to it, I'm not sure we're we're trying to target that goal. So I would, I would maybe strike that item. I don't think it's a big enough dollar amount in either direction. I'm just trying to make it a less cumbersome article and more specific to the goal that we had stated earlier. Unless there's some reason that we need the penalty money or we think that's going to solve some other problems somewhere, which I hadn't have not heard before. The other thing I want to mention is the actually, I'll let Ms. Hay talk. I I think that's all.
I was going to actually support what Mr. Lucente has said and also add not just a simplification and a, you know, staying true to our particular driving force here, which is to make sure that we have definitions for construction noise before the next construction season, which I believe was what we stated at this table when debating this for the fall. But the other pieces that we are in the process of reconstituting the noise committee. And this really should be work that they, you know, have a hand in, whether they drive or whether they, you know, are complimentary to the staff work. I'm not opining, but I think they certainly need to be involved. And so I wouldn't want to supersede that authority either. And and once we have the noise committee, they can then look at the full content of this bylaw and they may have other things. And at that point, we bring a more comprehensive set of changes. I think this is supposed to be incredibly surgical, tactical change. So I would support. I think, Mr. Lucente, that was an excellent point.
So would be helpful is I heard Mr. Lucente said he doesn't want to address fees or fines, penalties.
I would also add the legal holiday question because I know that that was a hot topic and I'm not sure, again, that's that's one of those items that's gonna solve all of the problems that we're trying to address here. I think Ms. Hay said it better than I did, but you know, surgically doing this and keeping it limited would be wise, in my view, and I.
So I I understand. I think that a noise committee who has specialists in what is noise is important to defer to. The question of fines, which I'm willing to say, if we don't want to do it, you don't do it now. That's not really the subject of experts on noise. The question of holidays is really important with regard to how was it being enforced? Because it was unclear as to when is it that you couldn't do this? So we could side to defer it. I mean, my goal here is to eliminate as much of the ambiguity as possible. But I would question saying, let's leave it to a specialist committee topics that really aren't the subject of the specialty, right? And these are.
I'm not sure I agree with the concept that all of the people in the noise committee should be noise specialists. We need some people that that have that skill set. But we also need the people who make the noise to be at the table and to have a voice about, which is, you know, we haven't constituted the full committee yet. One of the reasons is, you know, we we want a broad diversity of people so that they can come to us with well vetted items that are that are workable, right? I I think that's what we're trying to get out of the noise committee. Not just they can hear noise and tell you the DBA of a particular noise level. I don't, I think we would be making a mistake only having experts on that committee. And this is the type of thing that the you know, penalties that can be reviewed by, you know, what what other towns have done or cities. And the holiday thing, I brought that up because the holidays, in fact, conflict with what other construction holidays are. And I think what we want is some sameness in the town of Lexington, which might mean we need to change some other you know, other bylaws or other ways we we do business. But as I understood it, the legal holiday thing was not as straightforward and clear cut.
Mr. Sandin.
So I agree with Mr. Pato that we had a huge amount of public comment about holidays and what is a holiday and what isn't a holiday. And there was immense amount of agita about this. And I think we owe it to ourselves to be clear on what is a holiday and what isn't a holiday. And I do believe that's at our level to make that call. And so I would, I would advise that we do, in fact, clarify what is a legal holiday and make it perfectly clear as part of this warrant article.
Ms. Barry.
Not to go down a different hole, but Mr. Lucente, to pick up on what you said about holidays, is there some other place within the bylaw that we should be stating, you know, that the holidays are what's recognized by the state? Mr. Malloy, is that typically done that way? Or I'm not sure where the mismatch is, Mr. Lucente. I'm not sure which one of you wants to go first.
In in this case, contractors typically didn't work or don't work the major holidays that used to fall under the old blue laws. And so that's what was typically being enforced by the town staff for the day, those major holidays, Christmas, New Year's, Easter, things like that. And so what ended up happening and why we had the working group tried to address this was that we received complaints on Martin Luther King Day, Patriots Day, that contractors were out working. And so when we talked about it, the police said, well, contractors have always worked on those days. Those are not the old blue law days that the contractors didn't work. They work on those days. And that's why it wasn't being enforced. And that's where the lack of clarification was, was which set of holidays were we enforcing those, that set of holidays that contractors typically work? Or don't work, I mean, or all of the state recognized holidays? And that's why when we brought it to the board and we had a discussion, the board had said at one of the meetings that you wanted it to be all of the state holidays. And that's why we put it in there as it was.
Right. So my point is, should that appear somewhere else? And not just in noise, if we're talking about there were, I'm sure there's other bylaws, you know?
I don't, I I'd have to look. I get what you're saying, whether or not there's just a general, here are the state holidays that the town enforces or celebrates or whatever.
That's the point I'm trying to make. This is not, it's not. We could have one set of holidays in the noise bylaw and then all the other holidays are different and, you know, different bylaws. I think we I I agree with you, Mr. Sandin. It should happen at this table. I'm not sure it should happen in this bylaw to add more confusion. That I think we should do a look at holidays in general. That's my point.
Just to play former labor attorney here. I will read you the section of the state law on holidays, just to make you all aware of exactly how complicated this is. No, it's not that long, but full commerce restrictions apply on Thanksgiving and Christmas Day and for parts of Columbus Day and Veterans Day. Columbus Day before noon, Veterans Day before one. Liquor stores may not open before noon on Memorial Day. Non-retail commerce restrictions apply on Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day, where only retail establishments may be open on those days. Some businesses may be required to pay premium pay on some holidays. And local permits allowing businesses to open on Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving and Christmas Day are overseen by the Department of Labor standards. You can contact the Attorney General's Office for further, Labor Division for further clarification. So to Mr. Lucente's point, this is anything but straightforward. And by the way, I would not use, even though it's still in here, if we use Columbus Day, I would like it to be slash Indigenous Peoples' Day because.
Which will be the subject of a different article, I believe. Mr. Mr. Sandin.
So I appreciate Ms. Ms. Hay's comments, and I believe we discussed those previously that this is an incredibly complicated thing and I was. And I was, just wanted to compliment the town manager and his working group because I thought they sort of threaded the needle on this fairly clearly, that, you know, the statement that was put in made it short-circuited that, you know, thirty-seven, you know, paragraph language that is at the state with a very simple statement that the town will celebrate the following holidays. And I, I, I felt that was a viable alternative.
So just, sorry, I, but I will support the idea, which I believe was back to the loop of Mr. Lucente, that while it is threading the needle, well, it should apply to everything, not just to the noise. Um, if, if we're going to, you know, come up with a, a clarifying list of holidays on which we don't want activity, whether we call ourselves blue laws or not, I think it should be applied more uniformly.
Mr. Malloy?
I, I just looked really quick to search the term holiday in our code. And typically, it just refers to legal holidays. But then if you go to the cemetery bylaw, it does cite specific holidays, and it's not all of the state holidays. It's like seven or eight holidays. So, um, you would have a discrepancy between the two bylaws. And so perhaps there is a reason to have a bylaw somewhere that says what those legal holidays are.
Right, um, though I would say, you know, the town office building and the library don't celebrate the same holidays because they have different customers and it makes difference, different, it makes different sense as to when it applies because the functions are different. So I'm not sure a, you know, a uniform statement that says all things are being enforced for these dates makes sense. Similarly, we had trash, you know, one, right, the trash, uh, hauler typically delays a day for holidays, but on some occasions doesn't because it's going to be harder for their workforce. So I, I am I am satisfied to say we can withdraw certain elements of this. But I would be concerned about standing too firmly on the head of a pin with regard to, you know, trying to resolve a perfect solution.
So, Mr. Pato, is this a pins and needles discussion?
I think my leg is going to sleep.
I'll just ask, if we do include all the holidays, and maybe this isn't the final version you're working on, it's not apostrophe yes for patriots, it says apostrophe and veterans, I believe, is not possessed.
Sure.
But in case anybody is unclear, I would, I would be happy leaving it in this warrant article.
So let me get a, a sense. So the other thing I'm trying to do here is avoid seeing a citizens' article show up on Thursday that covers all this. So I want to thread the needle.
I think the, the thing we heard most about was the construction noise. Yes, some people commented, why, why was there noise on, I think it was Juneteenth? That was, you know, recognized as a, you know, a day, but I, I, I would be more comfortable leaving this, less is more, um, more effective. And I, I would not support putting in the holidays or the fees with this draft. I think the idea is good still. I think that we're addressing the, the big issue, which is the construction noise. So I think that's, we're trying to get that over the threshold. And, and I think our discussion tonight could be just an example of the confusion that may get caused at town meeting on the floor. We, we want it, um, we want it to see passed, we want it passed successfully.
Mr. Pato, am I correct that the bylaw, as it exists today, says Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays?
Yes.
Okay, so it is entirely possible that we could move forward with this without the holidays specified in it. And separately, the select board could issue a regulation, a whatever we're going to call it, that defines the legal holidays that are recognized by the town of Lexington. And then even if necessary, specify application within that, separating out the cemetery if necessary, whatever other examples. But it doesn't have to be in the bylaw, is my point. Because if we had done this two years ago, we wouldn't have Juneteenth in it, and then we would be going back to add that. And we don't know what else, and we'd be going back to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, I hope. And, you know, things like that. I think it is cleaner if we have a holiday policy.
So I, I, I think you're absolutely right, delaying the binding of those, I'm teaming with Barry. But, um, I think the bylaw might need to state that a legal holidays are specified by the select board. And we'll ask Mr. Malloy and, and town council to, to weigh in.
So if I could add, we did have that conversation last time. We talked about this. And I will say, on the town website, you can find a page that says official town holidays and other closing days. And it lists some of these days that Mr. Malloy, you know, like Patriots' Day, where he said, law enforcement said, that's a day they're typically allowed to work. You know, so yeah.
All right. So the goal for tonight, so
I, I stand your position. What is your position?
Ooh, Mr. Sandin. You played the card. I always play on you. I'm fine leaving this. I, in fact, I think it's, it starts to give clarity to this particular issue to actually list the holidays in here. Assuming you make those corrections to the apostrophes. And I, the fines, I don't have a major issue with. We need to start to be more clear, just for people to understand when they read it on the weekend, when they can't talk to anyone, and for those who might need to enforce it.
All right, so I'm seeing, you know, consensus across the board to keep this, and at least three members who would like to keep the full scope of what's there today. So let's leave this as it stands. And, you know, we, when we finish, when we get to signing the warrant, we will have come down to the final four. All right. Any further discussion? I understand there's ice cream up the street. Seeing none, we're going to call an end to this. Ms. Kelly, Ms. Axel has info. This will be editing based on council's, uh, feedback. And we are done with this item. So we'll move to the end of our session tonight. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the select board will be on Monday, December eighteenth at six thirty PM. And it'll be via hybrid participation, uh, likely in this room. And before I move to adjourn, I'll also comment that, uh, not only has the lighting changed in this room, but it appears that the software or configuration for the cameras have changed so that we are all now visible, which is outstanding.
We need more members so we can be the Brady Bunch.
No, I'm not sure the cameras could handle that. But in any case,
And it looks like Mark is lying down on the job.
Ms. Hay?
If I may, um, just indulge, as a follow-up to our discussion, I believe just a week ago, the menorah was lit in Emery Park. It is there and there will be, um, in the, the same light-up Lexington that does, um, the lighting of the tree and Santa on the day after Thanksgiving, um, in collaboration with, um, many other organizations in town, is also holding a lighting this Thursday evening at six o'clock, uh, which is the last night of Hanukkah, and the, and the menorah will be fully lit. And we are all invited, and I encourage all of us, as well as anyone else who's interested, to please attend. I believe there may even be cookies or gelt or something fun to go along with it.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. With that, I move that we adjourn. All in favor? Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in seconded all in
It's my only job.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it is unanimous. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.